All right, good evening, Mr. Garza. Do you have any announcements, reminders this evening?
Good afternoon. We're in council. I do, I want to actually go off a little off script, couple of items that we left off from posted agenda that I think are important. And so to start off the announcements, I'm going to ask Ken Gill to step up briefly and talk about our drought stage.
Yes, as most of the public knows, we are in drought stage, phase three, which limits the water sprinkling primarily to even odd days. If you're an odd address, it's Wednesday and Saturday, same times, six to 12, six in the morning till 10:00 in the morning, and then eight until midnight, and then even addresses are Thursday and Sunday. One of the things I just want to encourage the citizens out there that are listening is really conserve. This is different. Last year, we were, you know, we were in the same situation as far as stage three. This year is a little different because we had some rain last year, intermittent here locally. That helped reduce our demand. Right now, we are, I mean, we're pushing 17 to 18 MGD a day. And last year, we were at 15, and that 3 million gallons a day is a lot of water when you look at a month or two months. So we are encouraging, you know, water conservation, yes, keep your foundations watered, couple of feet outside of your foundation, that is important. But the rest of the yard, it can hang tough, you know, once a week or every other week watering or just light watering. But we definitely want to encourage it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Ken. A couple of other, a few other announcements or reminders. On behalf of municipal court, applications for the Child Safety Grant Program will open on Monday, August 7th, and close on Friday, August 25th. Organizations who are interested in applying or finding out more information about the grant should visit victorix.gov/child safety program or attend an applicant workshop being held throughout the month of August. On behalf of Environmental Services and Keep Victoria Beautiful, we want to invite community members who are interested in cleaning up our community to attend the Keep Victoria Beautiful's Third Annual Citywide Fall Sweep that will take place on Saturday, September 9th, from 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. Individuals and groups are encouraged to register at victorix.gov/kvb in advance to plan for different volunteer locations around the community. And lastly, on behalf of the mayor, we want to remind the public that applications for the 2023-2024 Mayor's Youth Council opened today, August 1st, and will close on Thursday, August 31st. The youth council is open to high school juniors and seniors who reside in Victoria County. And more information and applications can be found at victorix.gov/youthcouncil.
Thank you. And I had one other one. I wanted to welcome Commissioner Ort and Commissioner Sexton to the meeting. Thank you. As we work through this joint sponsorship agreement with the airport, I appreciate y'all being here and support. And then we'll go into public and employee recognition. We got a National Farmers Market Week proclamation.
Whereas Victoria farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to healthful, locally and regionally produced foods through farmers markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demands of a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmers markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 million each year to the U.S. economy. And whereas farmers markets serve as significant outlets by which small to medium, new and beginning, and veteran agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the Victoria City Council recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist encourage and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers and generate farm income to help stimulate the business development and job creation and build community connections through rural and urban linkages and more. And whereas the Victoria Farmers Market has been in operation for over 35 years, including seven years as an official program, the Victoria Food Bank of the Golden Crescent, promoting unprecedented growth of the market as well as increased access to fresh, locally grown and produced food for people in the greater Victoria area. Whereas the Victoria Farmers Market supports more than 70 local farms, food producers, and small businesses from throughout the South Texas, providing a year-round opportunity for those businesses to sell their wares to the public. Now therefore, I, Jeff Bautn, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby proclaim the week of August 6 through 12, 2023, as Victoria Farmers Market Week in Victoria, Texas, to further awareness on farmers market contributions to our lives in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week.
Thank you. I actually have two of our vendors here today, and so I'm gonna, I'll keep mine short and sweet so we can hear from two vendors who are regular members at our market. First of all, I want to thank the council for recognizing the importance of a healthy, vibrant farmer's market and for giving me the opportunity to speak about the market today. This market was founded in the mid-1980s and in 2016 was brought under the umbrella of the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent. It went from a seasonal market to a year-round schedule. In 2021, we added a second weekly market to our schedule, so now we're open at 9:00 a.m. every Wednesday, every Saturday, year-round. This market supports more than 70 members. We have our weekly vendors who are there, rain or shine. We have vendors who attend about once every other week. We have our seasonal vendors, our occasional vendors, but our whole market lineup includes more than 70 local farms and small businesses. We are a certified market through the Texas Department of Agriculture, and we have a vast array of foods all year round. Seasonal produce, farm-raised meats that were, you know, raised on pasture, local honey, a variety of homemade foods every week. Something that I wanted to point out is that the average age of an American farmer is 57. We need more young farmers, and cost is a big barrier to entry, particularly the cost of getting their products out to potential customers. Farmers markets are integral to new and/or young farmers as a low-cost way to connect with customers and grow those businesses. In addition, food at a farmer's market typically travels under 100 miles from farm to table. In our case, with the Victoria Farmers Market, most of our vendors are from within 30 miles. Compare that with food at a grocery store typically travels over 1,000 miles from the farm to the shelf. I also want to invite everybody to our National Farmers Market Week Celebration, which is August 12th at 9:00 a.m. at the Patty Dodson Center. It's all of your farmer's market favorites, plus a seed swap, plus a prize giveaway, and free snow cones while they last. The last thing that I want to do is Gary Henneke, one of our farmers, sent me some statements. He said that, you know, all of our products are locally produced, which keeps more of the money in the community because these food producers typically support, you know, the local feed stores, the local farm equipment dealers. The market provides a needed alternative source of food of high quality, which was quite evident during the COVID shutdown and winter storm Yuri. And he says he enjoys a great personal relationship with his customers and gives them the knowledge of how their food is produced. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Glenn Whitaker, who is a beekeeper at the market.
Yes, I do the bees. They aren't happy with me. Lots of them want us to take their honey. But anyway, I appreciate the recognition and encourage everybody to come visit us at the market and see what we have. And everything, like Meredith said, is fresh, and I accuse one vendor of feeding his hog sugar because, you know, those pork chops are so good. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
This is Cheryl Hanke. She's another vendor at the market.
So I recently just started up a small business in March of this year. And having the farmer's market, I was able to start getting products out without knowing anyone in the community. And all the vendors there were just more than welcoming to all of us and very encouraging. And it was just a fun way to get a nice jumpstart on our business, like to have that community come and welcome us, bring us together. And it was able, we were able to get, you know, a wider reach of our products out. So that's just, it's been very helpful for us getting started.
What are your products?
We personally do freeze-dried candy, and that's something that's appealing to the younger kids right now. They'll actually come in, and so instead of buying stuff from online is where usually you can find freeze-dried goods, they're able to get it just in town. They know that they can find us there every Saturday.
Thank you.
I've had some of it.
Try the Skittles.
It's not just for kids.
Thank you again. We appreciate. Yes, yes, we don't define a kid as, you know, under 18. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Now we have Kristi Euchert come forward with Keep Victoria Beautiful, Assistant Director of Environmental Services, to present the August 2023 Keep Victoria Beautiful Business Beautification Award.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before we get to the beautification award winner for August, I just wanted to highlight what our city manager announced earlier about our fall sweep cleanup on September 9th, which is coming up. And this is a cleanup where we clean up the roadways. So anyone that says, oh, we need to clean up that trash, now's your chance. The more we get, the more volunteers we get, the more teams we can make, the more trash we can literally get off, get up off the streets. I encourage, if you'd like to volunteer, please register. Let us know you're coming. That way we can be prepared. And last time, we had right at 300 volunteers. We've had close to, we had 400 the time before that. So, I mean, it's fun, and that's the most important thing. It's a little work, but it is fun. And you get to go away thinking, ah, I did something good. So on that note, I'm going to let Jonas Titus, who is one of our board members and of VEDC, do our presentation of our award winner tonight.
Thank you, Kristi.
Yeah. Each month, we invite the community to visit our website and nominate businesses that embody our mission of enhancing the livability of Victoria by beautification through a sense of pride and ownership. Each month, we present the Business Beautification Award to a deserving nominee. This month, our winner is Title Wave Auto Spa on North Navarro. You have likely noticed the recent addition to Victoria's busiest street of North Navarro. They opened their deluxe car wash in December of 2021 and stand out for their colorful flower beds and expansive trash-free property, which we learned today that they maintain themselves. And if you aren't a member yet, you're missing out on this experience of a fabulous car wash spa experience. This is the second nomination for Title Wave. They were first nominated in July 2022. It's my pleasure to present the Business Beautification Award for the month of August to Team Lead, Michelle Rogers of Title Wave Auto Spa.
You want to say anything?
You're on TV.
I am Michelle Rogers. Nice to meet all of y'all. My bosses are extremely sorry for our absence. But we just really want to say thank you so, so much for believing in us, for one. And this is just amazing because we do put in a lot of hard work. We do scrub those glass walls. Y'all see, we pick the weeds ourselves. We plant those flowers ourselves. But most importantly, we truly try to take good care of y'all vehicles when y'all bring it to us. It means a lot that y'all have just entrusted in us for this award, and we work really, really hard for it. Thank y'all so, so much. It means a lot to us. And yes, if y'all do not have a membership, you are truly, truly missing out. We are Sunday through Sunday. We're at 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at night. Please come. We come open every day. We're more than welcome to accept y'all business. Thank y'all so, so much.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I do have one more that's not listed on the agenda. You might have seen the press release that came out today, but I do want to ask Tiffany Toda to come up briefly because she has just recently come back from Washington, D.C. Of course, many of you know that she serves as our municipal court administrator. And recently, she's been certified as a fellow of the Institute for Court Management at the National Center for State Courts. The ICM Fellows Program offers the only intensive educational program for court professionals in the U.S. Currently, there are only 1,323 certified fellows anywhere in the world, and only nine of them are employed in municipal courts in Texas. To honor this high achievement, she was recognized in a graduation ceremony at the United States Supreme Court last month, which was really just a couple of weeks ago. And she couldn't take pictures. I already asked. It was not allowed. But we're obviously very proud of her continued focus and dedication on professional development. You know, we always joke that, you know, every so often, we're up here, you know, honoring her, recognizing her for some achievement. And I think that just, you know, speaks volumes to her own personal drive to want to improve her education and her professional development. And we're very grateful that she's with us as an employee and a member of our family. And so congratulations, and thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you all for supporting continuing education as a city council and our city management staff. We couldn't do this without it, you know, with the support from you all. So thank you.
Great. Good job.
Hold that up so we can see it.
Yeah, they want to see, you gotta show that off.
Put it wherever the camera can see it. It's great.
That's awesome.
It glows in the dark.
Good job, Tiffany. All right, items from council. Anybody have anything? Yes, ma'am.
I just, I want to give a shout out and a congratulations, and I hope I get this right. The Victorian Northeast baseball team of 13- to 14-year-old boys recently won the state championship, and they are on their way to the regional tournament in New Mexico. So I want to congratulate them, and if anybody knows anyone that is on that team or parents, congratulations to them.
Hopefully, we get to recognize them here sometimes soon. Hopefully, it's a little bit longer so they can keep winning. Yeah, great job. Anybody else have anything? No? Just to let y'all know, we are going to do just a little bit of a change-up on the agenda tonight. Probably should have told you at the beginning, but after the consent agenda, we're going to have the city manager's reports. And Mr. Spencer Gillette will do the joint sponsorship governance model first, and then we'll have the presentations on the budget. And then we'll go back and take care of E items. And we'll do the items two and three first because they'll be following the city manager reports that we need to actually address those. And then we'll do number one. So just to clarify that, and we'll go into citizens' communications with Mr. Titus.
Hello again, and thank you all for allowing me to speak, even though I failed to produce my fee. But what, VEDC, our Board of Directors, met yesterday morning, and Judge Zeller actually passed a motion for us to endorse the plan set forth for the joint governance of the airport. This is one that we are truly supportive of and excited about. This is, we view the airport as one of our most valuable economic assets, and any steps made to help embolden it and make it more resourceful, we genuinely support. So I have, pardon me, this letter for all of you.
Guess you can deliver it to Mr. Garza. That'd be great.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Titus.
It's what happens when you don't pay your $5.
Mr. Fisk, good evening. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and interested citizens. This morning, I attended the opening of the open house at the former Mitchell School. Right? I ran into a number of friends there, and I asked one of them why he had missed a volunteer meeting that we were both supposed to be at. And his response that he was at another volunteer meeting, right? Something else that he had volunteered to do. That got me thinking about volunteering in general and with nonprofit organizations in particular. There are people who can afford to give money, which many of us can't do in a significant way. Money certainly helps all of these organizations. What is more important is a donation of time, right? Most of the nonprofits that I have encountered have lots of room for more people who are willing to lend a hand. Besides the obvious fact that you can feel good about yourself or playing a small part in helping someone else, there are other benefits. See, when you work with any of these organizations, you get to meet all kinds of people. You expand your horizons. Even if you work with some of the faith-based groups, no one cares where you came from or why you were there. You don't need to be part of their church. You can be gay or straight, young or old, black, brown, white, or whatever. They even accept us transplanting the Yankees. It's just a group coming together to help make Victoria a better place. I believe it may have been Mr. Rogers who said, always look for the helpers. Become one of the helpers. It might take a village to raise a child, but it takes a community to make a stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Mr. Von der Oo.
Good evening, council and mayor. I have a problem. I'm Michael Von der. I live at 2204 East North Street. I have a problem with people living at the car wash. You know, you're going to wash your car, and they're living there. They're sleeping there, and that's their property. You don't, you don't mess with them because possession is nine tenths of the law. And they're living there, and they're not going to leave. And they also have people living at another business called Mr. Nice Guy's Smoke Shop. They sell the legalized hemp, which I don't agree with, and it's right by the Salvation Army. That's on 1302 East Rio Grande. And I was shopping for another battery at Walmart, and someone came up to me and says, I'm going to kill you. You're a snitch because you reported to the police that we're sleeping at the car wash. And I said, no, I didn't. I reported to the city council, and, you know, if a police officer happened to be there listening, you know, so be it. I said, I'm not giving no names or nothing, so, you know, I'm not a snitch. You can't do nothing to me, you know? But I wish these businesses would take care of this problem, you know, like the car wash. He don't even have his phone number on the business, you know, like to call for assistance. And I'm not going to wake someone up just so I can wash my car or call the SWAT team or special crimes unit so I can wash my car. I'll go somewhere else, like Lone Star Car, where they have someone there eight to five. And there's lots of panhandlers going up and down that business at Mr. Nice Guy's Smoke Shop. And it really is trashy and needs to be cleaned, and nothing is being done. And code enforcement, they do make rounds every week, you know, probably more. But I wish someone could talk to Mr. Nice Guy's Smoke Shop and, you know, clean it up, especially behind that old Stripes building. There's lots of junk and trash, and people are loitering and trashing out everything. And people are also stealing carts from HEB, and I'm not just talking about the regular carts. I'm talking about the motorized ones, the real expensive one. And sometimes the maintenance man can't keep up with all the, you know, until the battery goes dead, then he can keep up. And they're panhandling on the property at HEB illegally, you know, I'm talking about on the grass. And that don't make me a bad guy because I don't want to give no money for them. You know, you give them $10, and they go get an Old English 800 beer and a pack of cigarettes, and they're good to go. And I'm not giving those panhandlers any money. I even glued my ashtray close to my car so they can't peek and see change in there, you know? They say, do you have change? And then when you say no, they know it's in your ashtray. Well, thanks, and have a good evening. Appreciate everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Oo. All right, with that, we'll close citizens' communication, and we're going to go into items with public hearings, and we're going to do one hearing for both of them, and we got a small presentation also.
Item C1 is a resolution to approve and adopt the Community Development Block Grant 2023-2024 One-Year Action Plan and authorize the city manager to submit all required documentation for this year 2023-2024 CDBG program to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item C2 is a resolution to approve and adopt the Community Development Block Grant 2015- through 2019 Consolidated Plan and Strategy Amendment Number Four, 2020- through 2024 Consolidated Plan and Strategy Amendment Number One, 2016 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number Two, 2018 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number Two, 2019 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number Three, 2020 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One, 2021 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One, and 2022 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One and authorize the city manager to submit all required documentation for the CDBG program amendments to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
She's just warming up for the consent agenda.
So I don't know how small this presentation is, but I'll try and get through it as quickly as possible. As you can see, we have a lot of amendments to talk about tonight. So first, I want to talk about the CARES Act Amendment. Just as a refresher, of course, we have a five-year consolidated plan that has big overarching themes of how we're going to spend the money with large budget. And then the actual details are in the annual action plans. And so everything that we program in that annual plan has to correspond with the five-year plan. So the first amendment is actually our CARES Act funding. We had unexpended funds in the birth certificates, eviction prevention program, and we are moving those unexpended funds to the food bank expansion. So that totals $18,000, a little over $18,000 that we are moving to the food bank. And then this will close out the $800,000 grant that we received for CARES Act. And we will be completely done with that ahead of the statutory deadline to be done with it. done with that ahead of the statutory deadline to be done with it, so we're very, very excited about that. And then I'll cover the rest of the amendments and then our current 2023 annual action plan. So if you remember in June, this is really what the budget that we're proposing for this next year looks like. We have our entitlement funds of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, the unallocated funds out of the, this current consolidated plan is a hundred and thirteen thousand, the unallocated funds from our previous con plan is eighty-five thousand and then we are looking to program those into the funding that UCs proposed our administration, mortgage down payment and closing cost assistance program, owner occupied rehab neighborhood programs, which is demolition, and then public facility grants and public service activity grants, which I will identify at a slide at towards the end. So our 2015 to 2019 con plan amendments is unexpendee, reallocated and expended administration funds, we had unexpended public improvement activity funds and public service activities, which I will go into detail of what those were on the annual action plan amendments, but basically eighty-five thousand to be reprogrammed and we're reprogramming that into demolition, so all of our, we have, we'll have one demolition activity this next year, all of it will be that eighty-five thousand and coming from those twenty fifteen, 2015 to 2019 program funds. So for 2016, we had twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents left over in program administration. We have until September 30th to pay for that, that's going to be reallocated into demo and we already have bids out, so we are, we spend every last penny if we can. Our 2018 annual action plan is program administration and then some sidewalk improvements, I believe this is Salem, sidewalks along Salem, came in under budget at eight thousand, so that's twenty-four thousand that's moving to that demo. 2019, again, program administration and over these last several years, program administration has been a little higher because of turnover and also COVID really impacted the education budget because we couldn't travel anywhere and there's a lot of trainings that HUD puts on, a lot of quarterly meetings that go to San Antonio for and so of course we didn't, those were all put on hold or moved to Zoom and so that led to a big savings in our program administration line items. Lighthouse for the Youth Summer Camp Program was a program that was canceled because of COVID, it was a summer program that was scheduled for summer of 2020, so that entire program got canceled. And then Salvation Army had just a very small savings on, when they completed their program. Our 2020 Annual Action Plan Amendments that we are reprogramming is again program administration. We had a little bit left over in the Kids Backpack Meals Program, which again, a lot of these savings are because of COVID, because it's really unheard of for the food bank to not spend money, but when they had so much COVID funds, it really did help them, but we, I don't think we'll ever see that again unless we have another pandemic and a lot of extra type of funding coming around. And then the Water Utility Assistance Program did not expend all of their funds and those are out of 2019, those are going to demolition activity and out of 2020, those funds are now going to the owner occupied rehab program. 2021 amendment is again program administration, Boys and Girls Club had a small savings, Victoria Meals on Wheels had a very small savings, the Cafe to Go again was canceled because of COVID, they had planned on expanding their cafe and then we had a second wave of COVID that kind of shut things down, so then that of course canceled, you know, in-person cafe dining. And then the CAC Senior Services Care Program had also a very, very small savings, so that sixty thousand out of that annual action plan is being proposed to go to the owner occupied home rehabilitation program. So that twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents that's going to demo, it's actually going into this year's demo program because we have to spend it by the end of the year. But the rest of that eighty-five thousand is going into next year's 2023 demo program, so that's what that 2022 annual action plan amendment is for. So this is this year's plan, money we have not yet received that will go into effect October 1st. So again, that same kind of funding overview, I can't stress enough, our entitlement this year is still only five hundred and sixty-six thousand, this extra funds is from, you know, our unexpended funds out of those previous grants. These funds of course have to be spent to help load a moderate income individuals and families in our community and this is just a reminder of what those income limits look like, these are the newest ones that went into effect June 15th. So our public facility recommendations that of course you saw in June is Boys and Girls Club of Victoria is proposing a technology center room, Mid Coast Family Services is going to build a day center, Meals on Wheels needs to establish a real parking lot, V-Cam is helping, building a new facility for clothing and donation and sorting area and then YMCA has renovation plans for a childcare room and that totals three hundred and fifty thousand five hundred dollars. These are our proposed 2023 PSA activities, as you remember, this is the, this is the activities where there's never enough funding and then of course HUD caps at a fifteen percent, but we have Billity, Katan, Behavioral Interventions Program, it's going to, we're going to pay for staff member, Boys and Girls Club After School and Summer Camp, CAC Home Delivered Meal Program, CAC Senior Care Services Program, Golden Crescent CASA, we help with some of their volunteer training, Food Bank of the Golden Crescent Kids Weekend Meal Program, Gulf Ben Center Wellness Community, help pay for staff member, Meals on Wheels, Home Delivered Meals, and then United Way of the Crossroads Community Connection Projects, which helps with counselors to walk people through all of the various benefits in our community. And again, you'll see that we had a hundred and fifty-eight thousand requested, but we is a fifteen percent max, which is eighty-five thousand thirty-four dollars and we are proposing to award eighty-five thousand. So these consolidated plan amendments and annual action plan amendments are going to be submitted to HUD as soon as we get our resolution downloaded, so hopefully by the end of this week and we can start processing because we already can spend that twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents, so we can get that completely closed out. And then the 2023 Annual Action Plan will be submitted on or before August 16th, which is the deadline required by HUD. And that concludes my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That's very easy to follow, actually, so very, very good presentation. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on items C1 and C2. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this item, these two items, please come to the forward microphone. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and entertain any motions.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second to approve items C1 and C2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries and we'll let Ms. Hillbreak get after it.
Yes, sir. Item D1 is the adoption amendments of the regular meeting held on July 18th, 2023. Item D2 is a resolution approving a contract with Harrison Waldrop and Uheric LLP to perform the city's annual audit for the year ending September 30th, 2023 in an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand five hundred. Item D3 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Chemtrade Chemicals USA LLC for liquid ammonium sulfate in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Item D4 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract for liquid sodium hypochlorite to Univar Solutions USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Item D5 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract for liquid sulfur dioxide to DPC Industries Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and six thousand three hundred and six dollars. Item D6 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Charis LLC for liquid phosphate-based corrosion inhibitor in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars. Item D7 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with international dioxide for liquid sodium chloride in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Item D8 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Pennco Incorporated for liquid ferris chloride in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. Item D9 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Polydine Incorporated for the water, wastewater sledge de-watering polymer in the amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand sixty-five dollars. Item D10 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Brentag Southwest Incorporated for liquid chlorine in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-four thousand eighty-five dollars. Item D11 is a resolution approving the annual supply contract with Thornton, Musso and Bellman Incorporated for TMB 1160 in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Item D12 is a resolution approving the annual supply contract with Thornton, Musso and Bellman Incorporated for TMB 471C algicide in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. Item D13 is a resolution appointing Gilbert P. Reyna Jr., CPA as the representative to perform the no new revenue or effective tax rate in voter approval or rollback tax rate calculations. Item D14 is a resolution authorizing the publication of the notice of meeting to vote on tax rate. Item D15 is a resolution awarding the 2023 striping project in various locations to Payment Markings Incorporated of Donna, Texas for their competitive sale proposal in an amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars and nine cents. And item D16 is a resolution awarding the 2023 traffic conduit bore project to John Morris DBA Morris Underground Construction for their competitive sale proposal in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Give her some oxygen. Yeah, impressive. All right, anybody got a motion?
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
I have two, I have three of them here.
Can we have that reread?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're going to go into that city manager report number three right now, which is an update on the joint sponsorship governance model for the Victoria Regional Airport. We have with us tonight Spencer Gillette from Steve Baldwin and Associates. He has been working with the city and the county for, ooh, eighteen plus months, first looking at what we've done or how we operate the airport, what would be the best model to go to and then helping us get through this joint sponsorship agreement with the county. So thank you, Mr. Gillette, for being here and it's, it's your floor.
Thank you and good afternoon, mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to report out on the airport governance and the joint operating agreement with you. Apologize for the delay here, we had a presentation yesterday to the county as well and this is going to be the same presentation for you. So what we're going to go through is just a brief intro and background to refresh on the governance process and walk through that a little bit, the findings of the steering committee and the overview of the joint agreement itself and some of the key elements that are within that agreement. So as the mayor pointed out, about eighteen months or so ago, we were originally engaged to work on airport governance with the airport and the county and during that time, we formed Airport Governance Advisory Committee. That committee came forward with the recommendation that joint commission model for the airport being with the county and the city jointly to operate that airport. That model and recommendation was presented around January 2023 and at that time, the county and the city agreed to the model and concept and during that time formed the steering committee that we've been meeting with. That steering committee had members from both the county and the city. From the county, we had Judge Ben Zeller, Gary Burns, Kevin Cullen and from the city, we had Jesus, Allison and Gilbert who are here today. If you would like. So meetings of the committee, we had a few of them that we ran through with this group. So we're going to run through some of the key elements now of that joint agreement that came out of the, the meetings that we had with the steering committee. The governance authority for this to take place is pursuant to Texas Transportation Code Title III, Chapter 22, Subchapter D, Joint Operations. So what that is allowing for is two public bodies within the state of Texas to jointly operate an airport. The joint agreement and sponsorship are going to be through a fifty-fifty percent breakdown between the county and the city. The county itself would retain a hundred percent ownership in the property and facilities prior to the joint agreement, but after the effective date of the joint agreement, it would be a fifty-fifty percent ownership. However, it's important to note that the county will lease all airport property and facilities to the airport commission for no consideration, so zero dollars. Similar to this is the sponsorship of the airport, which would also be fifty-fifty percent cosponsorship. This is important in relation to the certification of airports by the Department of Transportation through the FAA as well as for federal grants. The board membership will have five members serving staggered three-year terms. Appointments would be made by the county with two members and the city with two members and then the fifth member to be appointed jointly by the county judge and the city Also important to note that with each of the appointments from the county and the city, only one such member may be an elected official, so that'd be a total of two elected officials that could be on the board. Officers of the board will include a chair, a vice chair, secretary and treasurer, as is typical for airport boards, elected from the members of the board and the chair itself may not hold an elected office. Here are some of the powers of the commission. This is powers that allow the commission itself to operate the airport day to day and to set rules and regulations, to improve the facilities and maintain it for those that are using the airport, to lease airport property to tenants, employ airport employees and enter into agreements either with the county or the city or other public agencies of the state and employ an executive director as well. Here in the finances, one of the things that is withheld from the commission is the ability to issue debt. If the commission does need to issue debt, they'll have to come back to the city council as well as the county commission to gain that approval. The finances overall for the commission are intended to be as financially self-sufficient as possible, so the commission would be putting together an annual budget, presenting that annual budget to the county as well as the city for their approval. The commission is also charged with developing a policy regarding the establishment of a capital reserve account and an operating reserve account. And financial shortfalls would be shared equally between the county and the city if it were to go outside of the budgetary needs and the fiscal operation of the airport itself. County services, so for all intents and purposes, the county would continue to serve as the administrative arm of the commission similar to how it is today at the airport and fire and police services would continue through the county of Victoria as well. Finances of the commission would be administered through the county auditor with payment and disbursement of the airport funds requiring executive director approval from the airport. So these funds would be already approved through that annual budget process and this would be more so the checks and other things necessary to really administer the, the airport and the operation of the airport. The term of the airport commission would remain in perpetuity unless it was dissolved by a majority vote of either the county court or the city council. This is provided that the commission itself would remain in place for a minimum of five years. Should either party decide to leave after that five-year period, it would be subject to the approval of the FAA and how it is written today, it would revert back to the county upon termination of the commission. In the agreement, it outlines the Victoria Airport Advisory Board. So this board would be the same board that the city and the county would be appointing to serve as the airport commission, but before the FAA gives their approval, it'll act as an advisory board only. This board would then advise the county and help with the transition over in, with the FAA to gain their approval and update the airport operating certificate, which is under 14 CFR Part 139. under fourteen CFR Part one thirty-nine. So, that is the certification of airports. So, what we're asking here today is that at the next meeting of the city, that you would hear and review the agreement itself, and then deliberate upon that, and hopefully accept that agreement to form this joint airport commission. At this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
How is this going to change the operation of the airport, if any? Is it going to continue to operate the same, you know, or what exactly is changing?
Day-to-day operations would remain very similar to how a passenger experiences them today. What this will be changing is the overall governance of the airport, and how policy decisions are made, where funding would be coming from, and gaining additional support from the overall community, from the city and the county, in the operation of the airport.
It's only for operation purposes, not for the passengers? They're not going to be affected by anything like this?
I wouldn't say they won't be affected, but it would be a longer-term effect, right? So, over time, we're hoping that this board can move the airport in a good direction that will really help the community as a whole.
I have a question.
And to be clear, when we say that it might affect, you know, that experience, we mean in a positive way. You know, things like terminal improvements, right?
Parking.
Parking, you know, et cetera. You know, the experience of the airport to somebody hopefully will improve as this new governance model more proactively plans and develops things like a CIP, as an example, which currently, you know, it just doesn't function like that, but...
I have a... The county will, up to the agreement, they obviously have a hundred percent ownership of assets and everything there, as I understand.
Yes, so with the finances, all airports have enterprise funds, so the money that the airport has today would remain in the enterprise fund. As far as property ownership, that is in recognition of that the county owns it today, and would be leasing back the actual property and the land to this airport commission for no consideration, being zero dollars.
So, five years down the line, this folds for some reason, and the city has invested a whole bunch of money into there. What happens to those assets that are fifty-fifty at that point?
The actual assets themselves would remain with the airport, but under the reversionary clause, the operation of the airport would revert back to the county.
And the assets, right? And we've talked about this before with Mr. Gillette, and correct me if I'm wrong on this. If it's an asset that was built by city and county under this joint sponsorship agreement model, then when you revert back to, say, just the county, there has to be some sort of agreement that the FAA approves, and, you know, how you split that asset back up to get it back to the county, right, would be included in that reversionary documentation that would go to the FAA for approval. So, the city and county would have to work out at that time what happens to it.
Yeah, I just didn't want to see something happen, and all of a sudden, three members gang up on the city, kick them out, say, "We're out, but we'll take your asset," and the city's left holding nothing, except for a better airport, mind you.
Yeah, I think one way to think about it is that the assets that are purchased are the airport's assets, right? And so, regardless of who serves as sponsor, that asset would belong to the airport. And so, something could potentially be figured out at that time, as the mayor suggests, but by default, you know, the asset is owned by the airport. It was simply split-funded, you know, ahead of time, and it would stay at the airport. Yeah.
So, my understanding of that concept is that, let's say there's a particular project, improvement project that comes up that is suggested by the airport commission, and the city and the county then basically approves participation in that project through the budget process? Is there, or is there a specific agreement related to that specific facility about funding that would address some of these issues that Councilman Young brought up in terms of if there's debt issued and the asset goes back to the county, what happens to the city's debt that's associated to that asset? Is that worked out between the city and county at the time that the project's funded?
Well, there was one part of your question that mentioned the capital improvements to the airport, and there is, to differentiate the two, one would be the capital of improvement that is part of the improvements that are offered through grants, right? So, anything that is going to be funded at the airport via grants is funded via an airport capital of improvement plan that the airport works directly with the FAA. So, the FAA approves this plan for five years, so that the city and the county will know what kind of projects are coming in the future in the next five years. Now, those could change. Now, those projects will be funded in a way of ten percent by the city and the county, and I will divide it...
Local match.
Local match, that's called a local match. So, that particular portion, you will know what's going on. There's few cases in which the FAA has additional funds available, and they want to dump those funds towards the end of the fiscal year, and if you're available and you want to move your project forward from one year to another one, they will make that money available to you. So, that would be the only cases in which I would come to you and the county and says, "There is ten million dollars available. We can move projects around, but we need that ten percent." And usually, that takes quick moving, because if we don't get it, it goes to the next airport. And I'm going through a process like that right now on a million dollars for a fire truck for the airport, in which the FAA approved it in the last minute, and they're like, "When we give you the paperwork, you got seven days to get it back to me." And I'm like, "Okay, we'll figure it out, just give it to me." Because at this point, the county has agreed to match every grant that comes from the FAA. So, that's what you will see as far as the airport capital of improvement plan that will be approved by the feds. The feds approve what we get. Usually, in the planning portion of that, the consultants for the airport and I get together, and we looked at all the projects that the airport needs and the priorities, and then we kind of battle it out with the FAA. As far as the other improvements, those be improvements that the city and the county decide to do for the airport, and you guys would have to decide how you split that project. If you split it at a fifty percent, let's say that the airport needs a new parking lot, and the parking lot is half a million dollars, just an example, then under this agreement, you would do fifty-fifty. Each entity puts fifty percent, fifty percent. Jesus is right. At the end of the day, if something were to happen, which I can tell you that by experience and looking around the country, once an airport goes on a type of governance in which it takes a little bit of the politics out, those airports flourish, and they do very well. So, it's very hard to go back, because by the time everybody realizes the airport is doing a lot better. But at that point, you know, you would have to figure it out, what is it that you want back? Because Jesus is right, the asset becomes an asset of the airport. The airport is by default an enterprise, so the airport keeps its own money. If the airport were to come into ten million dollars tomorrow as a way of, let's say, oil royalties, those royalties cannot go anywhere else other than the airport. Every dime that is made at the airport stays at the airport, and it is a federal crime to move that money outside of the airport to be utilized somewhere else within the sponsorship of the airport. So, you can rest assured that everything that gets given to the airport becomes part of an asset of the airport. And as an example of that, we have several facilities at the airport that are owned by the airport, that are rented to the sponsor. So, the county is the principal renter of the airport. We have leases with them, and by federal law, we cannot actually go and offer a deal for the land or for the buildings. We have to go with the fair market value, so that the FAA checks on all of that. The FAA audits us from time to time, so everything stays at the airport, I hope.
So, I think part of your question, though, I think also went to, how does that look in real life?
Yeah.
And the reality is that, you know, we would lean, as a city, right, we would lean and empower the airport commission, newly-appointed board, to work with Lenny, right, who is the subject matter expert in all this, to develop a CIP program that's multi-year, right? And they can, you know, talk through what's important this year, or in year three, or in year four, or year five, or whatever. Let them decide whether they want to do the parking lot first, or the terminal restroom building, right, like, whatever. And then they would present that plan, you know, to the city and to the county, and yes, technically, we would approve, you know, an annual budget that includes an annual allocation, but we would at least have, you know, an idea as to what does that look like in year two, in year three, in year four, in year five, so we can adequately plan our own finances, and so the county could also adequately plan, you know, their finances. And so, the commission, working with Lenny, would develop the plan, present it to each respective, you know, governing body, and then that's when we would go from there.
So, does this agreement contemplate that for specific projects, there would be further agreements between the city and the county as to funding for that project? Because I know it talks about a fifty-fifty split for things like operations, things of that nature, but if there's other types of projects, and not the FFA grant projects, but other, or FAA, rather, grant projects, but if there are other types of projects, the way I understand this document is that it contemplates that there would be other agreements for funding for specific projects between the two entities. Am I reading that correctly?
Like, if you wanted to build a hangar, for instance?
Yeah, so if you wanted to build a hangar, then it wouldn't necessarily have to be a fifty-fifty split, it could be a seventy-thirty, or a sixty-four. Is that the intent of this agreement?
How this is set up right now, the commission itself is not able to issue debt. So, if there was a project that they cannot fund on their own, they'd be coming back to this board, as well as the county, and then requesting that, right? During that time, an agreement would have to be put into place between the city and the county to issue debt, and the terms of that agreement would be up to you.
Okay, that answered my question, thank you.
But that only applies if it's through the issuance of debt. If it's based off of, like, cash flow, I think it'd have to be split fifty-fifty. Correct?
That's correct, fifty-fifty.
And I think you said in there that this agreement, this joint sponsorship agreement, needs FAA approval. What are the criteria that they're looking for in terms of whether this is approved or not?
Well, they'll look through a number of things. We've worked in multiple areas of the country on very similar projects, and we worked together with the FAA to form an application to them. So, the application itself is to obtain an operating certificate, which only the FAA, through the Department of Transportation, that is, and the secretary, is able to issue that operating certificate to operate your airport. Today, the county holds that operating certificate. To change the operating certificate, you need to apply. So, with this resolution, that would kick off the process of us developing that application and submitting it to the FAA for their approval.
Okay. But these, I guess specifically, is there anything specific that they have to have in these agreements that, for approval or rejection, I guess is what I get at?
Well, they will review the state legislation, so the governing authority, they will review this document that we are creating here, the joint sponsorship agreement. They're going to review the airport property and look that it has good title for the change of sponsorship. And there's a few other elements as well that will work with the airport administration on developing for the application itself.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions for Mr. Gillette? Appreciate you coming down here to the heat. You came in from Michigan to come see us. So, got to have it.
That's where it's cool.
Have some barbecue before you go.
You can take the heat with you.
What's the weather like over there right now?
It was about eighty degrees and sunny today, and plenty of fresh water.
Wow.
And just to remind you all the timeline, we are hoping that the county will take up this joint sponsorship agreement under consideration on their dais either August seventh or the fourteenth. And then, we will have it on our agenda the fifteenth in anticipation that they have approved it, and then we will discuss it here in public for the details of it, and make sure everybody has their say, and then we will, if at that time, they've already passed it, we will vote on it. And thank you, Mr. Gillette. Thank you, Commissioners Ort and Sexton. Appreciate y'all's hard work on this item as well. With that, we'll go to Mr. Garza and jump into city manager report number one.
And number two, so I'll tackle both items in the same presentation. Before I begin the presentation, I do want to mention, I was reflecting on this just right before the meeting, but this is actually the fifth time that I stand in front of you to present a budget. Yeah, exactly. Yes. So, it's crazy how time flies, but I think we've come a long way as it relates to the improvements that we've made, to the sophistication, modernization, and simplification, really, of how we develop the budget, ranging from how we tackle that in-house, things that maybe the public never see, but even ranging to how we display the information to an online-only platform, which of course is easier to follow than having to go through, you know, a thick binder. And so, we've come a long way in that five-year period, and certainly, staff deserves all the credit for that. Obviously, everybody's aware, you know, of Gilbert's leadership, and we certainly couldn't have gotten to where we are today without his leadership as our CFO. Of course, Wesley and Laura are super involved with this process as well, and so I want to thank them publicly for their work in helping us get to where we've gotten over the last five years. But then they, of course, have other staff that helped put the budget together. Marissa, Victoria, and Sarah, they helped tremendously, as well as Adrian, who's one of the newest folks in the finance department. And so, I want to publicly thank them for all of their work in helping put the budget together. I know it's not an easy task, so thank you all so much for everything. Yes, applause, yes. So, in front of you, you also have some documents. You have in front of you a transmittal letter that highlights some high-level summary items of every fund, which I think you'll find useful. You also have the, what now has become, you know, very standard of us, from us, to put together these proposed budget flyers. So, that's in front of you. This year specifically, we also added an addendum, if you will, which is a one-page on Public Safety Headquarters, since that's a very large project and something we don't normally do. And so, that's in front of you, so you can review at your leisure. And so, now, I'll begin going through, I hope, brief, like an hour and a half, maybe. I'm just kidding. I don't know if it'll take me longer to go through this than it did April to read the consent, but we'll find out. Anyway, so, very similar presentation to the one that you received in June. Not a lot of major changes, but I will focus, of course, on some of those changes, because they are meaningful. But as we described in June, we try and sort of come with, come, develop these topics to really help share the story of the budget, and it's no different this year, like it's been in others, where we want to talk about the economy, except in this instance, it's positive news, because we're able to, for the first time in a couple of years, actually increase our sales tax revenue, so that's a good story there. Of course, every year, we have a balanced budget. Because of our NTV internet increase to our taxable appraised value, we're able to lower the property tax rate. I'll talk briefly about that. And of course, we continue to implement another phase of the compensation program that we began four years ago. We also have some good news to report on the health plan, and some reduction in employee premiums that we'll just cover at a very high level. And of course, the CIP plan is a big part of the story for this upcoming year because of the inclusion of a large facility building, of course, the Public Safety Headquarters building. We, of course, also are contemplating for some other capital replacements, such as vehicles, which is something that we look at every year. And there is a good story to tell as well on the grant side, because of things like the roughly twenty million dollars that we are anticipating receiving from hazard mitigation program. So, I already went through that. I want to actually first start off with highlighting differences between what you saw in June and now, before I kind of go into a holistic summary of it. But in June, we presented a expense budget of two-hundred-and-forty-eight-point-six-million, which you have in front of you today, and what is officially being submitted as the proposed budget, actually has it at two-hundred-and-fifty-five-point-five-million. That's on the left-hand side of this slide. I won't go through each of those line items on this slide, but this is a good slide that summarizes, you know, what that six-point-nine-five-million-dollar increase entails. summarizes, you know, what that six-point-nine-five-million-dollar increase entails. Um, the one that sticks out, of course, is on the right-hand side, the third from the bottom, which is the twenty-twenty-four CIP program, an additional five-point-six million dollars. Um, that's directly associated with an increase to the budget for the Public Safety Headquarters building. That takes up a big, a big chunk of it. Um, on the right-hand side shows that in June, we suggested that we were looking at a two-hundred-and-forty-one point eight million dollar revenue budget, and what is being proposed today and submitted is a two-hundred-and-forty-nine point three million dollar revenue budget. Um, there's a very, very direct link between the increase in the revenue as it relates to the Public Safety Headquarters building, and it's the biggest line item on the right-hand side of the page is also related to bond proceeds, which is also directly related to the increase in the budget for the Public Safety Headquarters building. Um, and like I said, I won't go through every single one of those items, but, um, feel free to go through that and, and ask any questions you might have. Some of these will come up just as I go through the presentation also. So as I alluded to, a two-hundred-and-fifty-five point five million dollar expense budget, um, you'll see on the lower right-hand side how the bulk of the revenue side of the equation shapes out. Um, very similar to what we presented in June. Um, we're seeing some reductions in utility fund, because you may recall that in fiscal year twenty-three that we're in now was a very heavy utility constructed year, and fiscal year twenty-four will be a very heavily street construction year, so that accounts for some of that. Um, you also notice on, on, with the blue on the special revenue fund, this, the CDPG MIT that I referenced, um, that's accounted for in that as well. And so you hear very consistent theme, um, around some of these topics as I go through the presentation. This is just a breakdown, very similar to the image that is in the brochure, simply just highlighting, um, the different levels of, of funds making up that two-hundred-and-fifty-five point five million dollar, uh, budget on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, we have, uh, what we now, of course, have gotten used to seeing, which is the budget wheel that shows total general fund of roughly fifty-nine million, which of course is, um, the bulk of the administration arm of the organization, of course, public safety, and some other key elements are part of this. And so you'll see that on the outer circle of this pie chart, we include revenues, and you'll see that property tax revenue is at thirty-five percent. You'll see sales taxes at thirty-three percent, um, and everything else is just a mixture of transfers and some other fees and permits and franchise taxes. Um, the thing that I'll point out here, though, is that while the thirty-five percent, um, is not a big percentage, you know, just a few years ago, property tax revenue was hovering thirty-two, thirty-three percent of general fund, so we are beginning to see some small strides in property tax revenue, slowly but surely making a bigger, uh, being a bigger percentage of the general fund, which is good. On the revenue side, um, like I alluded to earlier in the, in the larger summary, um, very consistent message on the bottom hand, on the bottom, which shows some of the CIP, um, programs, um, coming off the budget. We did have an, uh, a figure in the budget for fiscal year twenty-three in anticipation of receiving a FEMA ASR grant that we did not receive, and so that fund is coming, that funding is being removed from that. Um, the blue, of course, sticks out, right? The CIP on the bonds, um, that goes without saying because we have a very large CIP program, which I'll go to in a, in a minute. Um, there's a direct correlation, of course, with that as, uh, uh, because of the large CIP program. I'll briefly go into talking about property and sales tax, because you also, you also see those, um, on the, on a blue bar here moving to the right, because we do foresee, uh, some additional revenue on, on both fronts, and I know that's a big interest, uh, for you and, and the public specifically. So I'll get right into that. On the sales tax side, as I alluded to earlier, uh, in terms of the economy, we are budgeting an increase of eight-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Uh, we still feel the need to be somewhat conservative with it despite the projected actual for fiscal year twenty-three, uh, coming in at just shy of twenty million dollars. Um, as we've talked in the past, and I made the same comments at the Sales Tax Development Corporation, uh, while it's a good thing that we're seeing increases in sales tax receipts, um, we don't feel comfortable sort of going all out, thinking that that's something that's gonna happen every year. There's a lot of different other metrics that we follow that don't necessarily give us the confidence to be able to do that. And so as an example, you know, inflation obviously has a direct impact on the cost of goods, which directly impacts the sales tax revenue that we receive. Obviously, inflation isn't going to continue to go up to the same extent. Um, we've also noticed that, um, while it's good that people are spending more money, we aren't necessarily seeing increases in just median household income levels. Um, and so it begs the question, you know, well, where is this money coming from to buy the, these additional goods and services? And so until we have other metrics that sort of back up the fact that there's an increase in disposable income that will be consistent, then we don't feel comfortable, you know, sort of going all the way, thinking, oh, well, let's budget twenty million dollars in sales tax. And so we'll just have to wait and see. But it is a good news that we're, uh, budgeting an additional eight-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in sales tax. This is just another, um, graphic that I know you've been accustomed to seeing that Gilbert puts together that shows that, that, that rolling twelve, in essence, um, to suggest that, you know, where we're at, um, is a good, um, is a good place to be on the eighteen-point-two. On the property value side, I know that's been a big topic of conversation. Um, this is somewhat unprecedented for us because, uh, in June, you know, we presented an increase to the NTAV followed by, you know, uh, me saying that, well, every year we see this NTAV go down, you know, over the course of the last month, and we had a whole conversation around our proposed tax rate in June, um, communicating to you that, well, the NTAV is gonna go down by the time we get the certified tax rolls, so it's gonna look completely different. And it certainly did, does look completely different, but in a different direction than we anticipated. And so you'll notice, and I'll go through it, but I want to highlight, of course, the number that's circled, uh, which is a twenty percent, it was actually nineteen-point-eight percent increase in the NTAV, which is higher than what we presented in June. Um, and you'll see with all of the different line items up above, how all of those different elements come into play. So residential, for example, up fourteen percent, commercial up twenty-two percent. Um, I have a different graph that I'll show you here in a second that shows how commercial is trending, um, at a higher pace than residential, which I believe to be good news. But you'll see how the rest of it falls into play, and it might make a little more sense to follow when I show you the next graph, but I'll leave that up for a second anyway. But I guess I'll also stop to make sure or ask if you have any questions on this slide.
I've, I've never paid attention to exempt property.
Yeah.
Um, is that included in the value when we do our calculation, even though we exempt property means we don't tax it?
Excuse me. Well, then you gotta remember, it's called exempt property, but churches can have property that are taxable, it depends on the use of it.
Okay.
The use is a key part.
So it does have to be factored. Thank you.
Okay, here's another, just a couple of graphs to kind of tell the same, the same picture, if you will. On the left-hand side, it shows the increase of the NTAV over the last few years, and you'll see how between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-three, NTAV has gone up a total forty-five percent, um, which obviously is consistent with the conversations that we've had every year over the course of the last three years, where we've been able to decrease the tax rate but increase revenue because of the large increase in NTAV. That's also why I think now we're seeing, you know, property tax revenue being thirty-five percent of general fund, right? Because we have been seeing an influx of new revenue coming into the general fund. That's what helped us, that, that is what has helped us add positions, improve pay, you know, et cetera, because we've actually been seeing that new revenue coming into the general fund. But that's a really good graph, just to graphically show how over the last, you know, four years, um, that NTAV in total has gone up forty-five percent. On the right-hand side, um, I mentioned to Gilbert when I saw this graph that I couldn't help but smile, um, because many of you may recall in twenty-nineteen, you know, uh, me making the observation that, you know, there was a lot of inconsistencies with the way that residential and commercial values, uh, were coming in, and you could see this graphically, right? How there is no relationship whatsoever, uh, between residential and commercial, which of course are the top two lines of that graph, but you're seeing how there is now. So you're seeing how, over the course of the last four years, you're seeing both residential and commercial trend up together. Um, and that's the way that it should be. These things should be trending up or down together. There's always gonna be some variances. In this instance, there's a good variance in that on the commercial side, over that same four-year period, commercial has gone up forty-eight percent and residential thirty-three percent. And so there is this shift that's taking place with the val- with the valuations that is not so much focused on placing solely, you know, a burden of increase in, in value on the residential side, but is also taking place on the commercial side. Um, and so you can see, you know, some of the history there, but again, you know, back in twenty-nineteen and twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen, you know, residential and commercial were trending in opposite directions, and many of us were like, hey, that's a red flag, you know, what's going on? And so you could see how that's clearly, you know, been, been corrected and rectified. Um, and so I think this graph is awesome to show, uh, the improvements in that sense. The other thing that I'll point out here that is, that is interesting and probably something that we need to keep an eye on, even though its impact isn't a deal breaker, is the red line at the bottom. Um, the red line at the bottom, in essence, are the frozen values, and, um, as our community, um, uh, ages, um, we're beginning to see an increase in the amount of money or value that is frozen, um, which obviously has a direct impact on the NTAV and everything else. Um, and so that is an interesting trend, because you'll also notice that over, over that same year period, it's, it's kind, it's, the amount of frozen value has increased at a higher rate than the previous years. And so that's kind of an interesting, interesting thing to just keep an eye on. Any questions, comments, concerns on? Jane, I don't know if you want to add anything, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, I know you're our representative on the appraisal board, so.
I, I just want to, um, even though values have gone up, and I know a lot of people are unhappy about that, but, uh, I just want to compliment our, our new, uh, what is it? Uh, chief appraiser, uh, who has done a lot to, uh, make things more even and fair, uh, which is, of course, a state law anyway to do, but, um, just the appraisal district has been working hard, uh, on, on its role in all of this.
Absolutely. And I know the audit's in the way, which was a big topic of conversation, so.
Well, for, yeah, I guess it's a good time to say that, that the, um, you know, audit is underway. Uh, they've done, I think, the first phase of it, which is the, uh, a lot of questions, questionnaires, who've, um, personally interviewed every employee of the appraisal district. Uh, and that, that was done confidentially. They made it clear that it was done confidentially, so we don't have the results yet, uh, and I think there's a, another phase before we get the results, but, um, I just really, uh, am glad that we finally were able to get that started, uh, get that going, even though the certification of values, which is very labor-intensive, together with, uh, an appeal on behalf of the school district, that really the school district did most of, but the appraisal district was involved with. So there was a lot going on with them this summer in addition to the audit. And then just the scheduling of, uh, a large number of property value protests, so it's been a busy summer for the appraisal district.
Absolutely, and you can actually track that trend as well. That's the gold line near the center where you are seeing, you know, an increase of, of, just under protest.
Under protest.
Yeah. Thank you. And Dr. McNeil was recently appointed, uh, to serve on the appraisal board.
Yes, Dr. John McNeil was recently appointed to fill the vacancy that, uh, that we had on the board.
So if you happen to be in the ER, you know, you can talk about your property values in the ER. Yeah. Uh, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Um, on the residential and the commercial, these, the lines, are other cities pretty much like us that we have, that they have more, uh, well, depending on how much business they have, but are they seeing about that much increase or are we kind of, you know?
Uh, I don't think there's a one a- like a straight answer to that. I mean, I think the reality is that, from what we gather, you know, and Jan, feel free to chime in, but really all over the state, you know, they're seeing significant increases in valuations of property. Um, you know, many of our own local business owners have businesses in other counties, and they've also shared stories, you know, with us around how, you know, their properties, you know, went up sevenfold, you know, in another county. And so there's definitely some challenges going on across the state. I think that's why the state legislature, you know, made it a point to, um, you know, try and do what they could, um, from a property tax relief standpoint, because it is a statewide issue.
It, that's what was told us too at the, uh, appraisal district board, uh, that it was, was a statewide trend, and to some extent, some of the appeals and some of the discussions that they've had with, um, with their auditors and controllers on the state level was that our rates hadn't gone up high enough, uh, you know, at one point, and I'm speaking way out of school here, but they wanted us to make our rates be the same as Bayer County, and we're not Bayer County, and we were able to, to beat that argument. But, uh, yes, it's, it's a trend, um, which is kind of great for the state, but also it's, it's really gonna make things very difficult for all of the taxing entities.
Right.
So were y'all seeing a lot more businesses that were, uh, challenging the tax values? Or was it still about the same as previous years?
We had over nine thousand, uh, appeals or protests, I guess, uh, which are still being processed, but I think the, about seven thousand of them have been processed, either through informal hearings that then they settled. But, um, that was not just businesses, that was residential and businesses, and it was, um, more than double the number of protests from a couple of years ago. But I, I'll take this moment for a plug. Um, it, it was disappointing that of those nine thousand protests, um, nine hundred were no-shows. Ten percent of the, of the protests filed that the appraisal district then prepared for the hearings, which was at a cost to the taxpayers because we had to make copies of things and so forth. Ten percent didn't appear, which means that their values held because they didn't come protest. So, um, I, that's just kind of a disturbing trend. I don't know, um, why that happened. It hasn't happened in the past. I don't know if they were trying to send a message, but it wasn't a, a good, good ploy.
We can send Tiffany over there and she can, you know, talk to them about their outreach docket, you know, and setting up on weekends or in different locations around town to help, you know, be more accessible. Because I genuinely do think that would help.
We, um, they, the appraisal review board, which has no connection to the appraisal district board of directors, uh, but they increased the number of members that were available for the appraisal review board. They increased the number of panels, they offered single-person panels, so they did an awful lot to handle the large influx of, of protests, partially because they had to, because they had to get to a certain percent by January or July twenty-fifth. But there was, um, a lot of work that was done, uh, to do that. And, um, well, that, that might be something to think about, but from what I've kind of understood about it, after all of the protests on a daily basis, all of the board members then get together to make their decision together. So, um, yeah, outreach might work, but you've still got to get the whole board back together.
That's a great question, and, and I did want to point out on this slide, because I think it'll help answer your question as well, that the under protest amount this time last year, uh, we, we were twenty-six percent more of a, this is amount, not number of protests, but you see the two-hundred-and-forty-one million dollars under protest? That's a twenty-six percent increase to what that amount was last year.
Okay. I see that.
Okay, so if there are no other questions on these trends and the certified tax rolls, and I think I probably should have verbalized this out loud, so I apologize if I didn't, I'm sure Gilbert was thinking it, but the net taxable appraised value for twenty-twenty-four, uh, is five-point-four billion dollars. So there, I said it, five-point-four billion. With a B. Okay, all right, so let's talk about the property tax rate. So as you know, we have SB two, which does provide some guidelines for us on how we calculate the tax rate. There is a, you know, a truth in taxation process that, you know, Ashley at the Controller's office works very closely with our finance department on. Um, and so all of this has been checked out. We've obviously already received the certified tax rolls, which were presented. And so, in essence, um, what you see in front of you is the proposed tax rate, of course, showing the current tax rate, what the decrease is, what the known-y revenue tax rate is, and what the voter approval tax rate is. And so I'll start with the current tax rate, which is the second line. So currently, we're at the point-five-five-eight-two cents, or fifty-five cents, right? Almost fifty-six cents. The proposed tax rate is just shy of forty-nine cents at point-four-eight-nine-eight. That is a reduction of just shy of seven cents, or that equates to roughly, I think, thirteen percent, um, of a decrease in the tax rate. Now, the proposed tax rate of the point-four-eight-nine-eight is the exact same amount as the voter approval tax rate of point-four-eight-nine-eight. And so we're in essence suggesting that we maximize the potential for revenue with the proposed tax rate, um, and match that at the voter approval tax rate, because that is the, that is, that is the highest that we can keep it at. Even doing so, like I said, um, reduces the tax rate by almost seven cents, which is almost thirteen percent. Now, well, I'll get to this on the next slide, but I know one of the questions that, that also comes up, of course, is revenue. But I know one of the questions that that also comes up, of course, is revenue associated to new improvements. So you'll see that at the bottom, which is $227, or for us, that equates to $137 into the general fund. One of the things that you'll note, and I'll point it out for full transparency, because I'm sure someone will ask the question when they see it. But in the flyer, we show the proposed tax rate and talk about how that's an increase of $783,000 or 4%. And if you're thinking, well, how can it be 4% when SB two has a 3.5%? Well, that 3.5% is based off of existing. So that does not account for any new improvements. And so that additional revenue that we're receiving, which is at 137,000, is more so associated with new improvements and has nothing to do with 3.5%. So there's no correlation there. This, of course, only emphasizes the need for economic development as new improvements don't impact that 3.5% cap that we have. And so that's why you'll see percentages kind of not necessarily match up because of just how the calculations work. But anyhow, and so how I alluded to, or what I alluded to, was that increase of 900, I'm sorry, $783,000 in revenue. But of course, it's slightly more than that because of the split between the MNO and the debt. And I have a separate slide to specifically go into the debt rate. But you see above what that split is. But I'm happy to answer any questions on the proposed tax rate. Okay. One of the questions that always comes up is what's the impact, right, on residents? This is a slide that we staff puts together every year, and so hopefully by now you're you're accustomed to seeing it. It's simply just a scenario of what an appraised value might be last year. We accounted for a 14% value and increase because that's what the that's what the increase was in residential overall. So if I went back, you know, to this, residential went up 14%, right, as a whole? And so that's why we use 14% on the second column here. We, of course, applied our tax rate, which is just shy of the 49 cents. And we, in essence, show the estimated increase in out-of-pocket expense for the different values. Now, what we showed you in June actually showed a higher amount. So what we showed you in June actually hovered some of these amounts closer to a dollar. This keeps it actually less, simply because with a larger NTAV, you're spreading that money out across the board just more significantly. And so it's actually a lesser impact on the residents than what was proposed in June. Hope that makes sense.
If your home is, has the homestead exemption, though, you would probably see a decrease.
Right.
Because you'd only be capped at 10% value increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't assume any homestead, anything else. I just took it from a high level.
Right. And, you know, now caveat by suggesting that obviously every person's experience will be different, because we all know that, you know, some property values, you know, in some cases went up 3%, in some cases it went up 20%. You know, there, it's every individual, you know, experience in this process will be different. But that's why we're simply just showing, you know, on average, this is what it would look like. So anyway. Any questions, comments?
Well, I'd just like to say that sometimes people go, well, you, you all are raising the tax rate. And I'm saying, we're not the only ones. Every taxing entity puts in their, you know, they chime in whatever they're gonna. So we're not the highest. We have the state, I mean, the school district, and then, you know, we have several taxing entities. We're just a part of it.
Right. And to be clear, we're reducing the tax rate, right? Not increasing the tax rate. And I do suspect, you know, that all the other entities in town are also going to have to reduce their tax rate, because, you know, the county, for example, also falls under SB two. You know, school district, different rules, but ultimately, especially with the legislation that passed on property tax relief for school districts, they're going to have to drop their tax rate as well. And so I think, you know, through the dropping of the tax rate, that's what produces, you know, some of that. But the reality is that, you know, our expenses go up every year. And so for us, it's important to have a real-life conversation around the fact that, you know, inflation is real, it impacts us. Cost of goods and services is simply just going up, right? I mean, all the items that you approved today on consent, for the most part, all those cost more money than what we thought going into it this time last year. And so these are real things that we have to account for. And so that's why it's important that we try, in essence, bring in new revenue every year to account for this. And I think in years, again, which we've done the last few years, where you can reduce the tax rate but bring in more money, you know, that's a win-win for everybody involved.
I'm going to take a little sidestep. Part of the reason that the frozen number went up, I think the appraisal district is being more assertive in encouraging people that qualify for homestead. I guess that's not really frozen, so never mind. But that's one. Yeah, that if they if they qualify for a homestead, that they should take advantage of that. And so there has been an increase there. And I'm using that to segue into the fact that there's a new proposal before the voters in November to change the homestead exemption for school districts. So it's won't impact us, but for school districts from 40,000 to 100,000, which will have a significant impact on the available tax money available to school districts, and it's really going to make them struggle. But I wanted you all to be aware of it, because if you hear about the $100,000 homestead, that would not be a city exemption. Ours would stay at 40,000. So there's a lot going on. The legislature's been active in trying to, you know, give some tax relief to individuals, which is fantastic. But it really, from our standpoint, from the taxing entity standpoint, it makes it much more complicated. And I think we just have to be open about that. And that's part of what Mr. Garza is trying to tell us. Expenses still go up.
Okay. Thank you. So this, in essence, just shows both. You know, we've talked historically around how sales tax is typically the more volatile source of revenue and how property taxes are more stable. Hence why property tax revenue being a higher percentage of your general fund revenue helps, because that's something that's more dependable and reliable. You know, watching this or seeing this slide also made me smile, because you're you're seeing at the at the very tail end of this chart, the way that, you know, a thriving community that's growing, that's revitalizing, that's just growing its tax base, that's how it's supposed to look. With both property tax revenue and sales tax revenue going up trending together. And so we're beginning to see that, you know, just now, the last couple of years. And so that's exciting to see. Hopefully that continues. And this is a metric that can be utilized to 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 really answer the question around whether that property tax base is growing or not. So these two growing together is a good thing. Okay, so to change topics to CIP. Sorry, I got trigger happy. I didn't think I'd be guilty of that, but others have been, so it was my turn to be. Anywho, so really quickly on CIP funding, you'll notice that, again, the big hit consistent message of the CIP, when we get to it, of course, is the Public Safety Headquarters Building. This simply just shows how some of that funding is spread out amongst the different sources. And so we're in essence proposing almost, I think it's a $98 million CIP program. And so you see how a lot of this funding, and you'll see it better in a future slide, how it all comes together. In this slide, you'll see CIP transfers, you'll see intergovernmental, and you'll see CIP bonds. The CIP bonds of the 44.2 are directly correlated to, of course, the Public Safety Headquarters Building. You'll also see on their grant funds, some of which is the CDBG MIT, which is in black on the 18 million. And so you'll see some of that. So again, consistent story across the board. This just shows you what grants are coming off, which ones are being added. Of course, on the left-hand side is a picture of what this year looks like, and then a picture on the right-hand side of what fiscal year '24 looks like. And you'll notice the CDBG MIT plays a big role in that. We did want to point out that there is a difference in this little box to what you saw in June, very minimal. Probably wouldn't have noticed it unless I mentioned it. But you may recall that part of the Public Safety Headquarters Building, specifically the 911 Communication Center, is being funded through the CDBG MIT. Now that we've gotten further along in the design process, now that Spoglass is involved, they've been able to confirm how much it's going to cost to literally just build the section of the building that's the 911 dispatch center area. And that is actually coming in less than what we anticipated. And so consequently, the unallocated amount that you see there of $7.7 million that we still have to talk about, how we would use that, increased. I think it was, was it 1. What was the amount? Yeah, so so about 1.3 million, 1.4 million dollars that was added to the unallocated amount because of confirming the expense for the 911 portion of the building. So that's good news. That just means we have more money to use for different projects as they come up. We are applying for another ASR grant, one that we feel more confident in receiving, because we had already received some notification aspect of it. So we re-added a grant match associated with an ASR well. And there's, of course, all the smaller grants that we typically do every year. We've accounted for those as well. And there is certain, then there is still some funds of the ARPA that we haven't spent, and so we're properly trying to account for that. I'll speed up. The expense budget, so this, of course, is a 255 million. Of course, you'll see at the bottom on the blue, that tells the whole story, right? CIP program is the is the number one driving force behind why there's such a big difference between the current fiscal year's budget and next fiscal year's budget, as well as some of the CIP transfers, specifically the grant ones that I already alluded to, which is the MIT. And of course, all the other smaller ones, you know, hopefully you got a sense of when the different departments presented their budgets. I won't go through those details. The CIP program that I alluded to, which was close to 98 million, it's 97.58 million dollars. What you saw in June was 92. And again, that increase is specifically due to increasing the allocation to the Public Safety Headquarters Building. What was presented in June had $45 million to the Public Safety Headquarters Building, and so you'll see the increase there. That increase is directly associated with an increase to $5 million, I'm sorry. A combination of increasing the money because of the cost of the project, but also because of what I mentioned about the 911. And so obviously, that money still had to come from somewhere, and so it was less money that came from the MIT. So we had to add some money to make up for that difference as well. But nothing else changed, you know, as it relates to the CIP. Staff's working real hard to put together the notebook that gets put together every year for the CIP. Of course, the big story behind the CIP, and I'll reiterate it very briefly, is that despite us having a large amount specifically for the Public Safety Headquarters Building, it's not at the sacrifice as of anything else. And so we're still planning a very heavy street year, which you see in this graph in orange. We're still envision, you know, that alone is a substantial amount, 20, close to $27 million on residential, close to $7 million with thoroughfares. So there's still a substantial amount of money that's being put towards streets, and I think that's a positive story. You know, we're just trying to not have people think or believe that because we're spending this money on the building, we've stopped spending money on streets. That's not true. We continue to do that. And that's why graphs like this really stand out, because it is a substantial amount of money that's being spent in fiscal year '24. Again, close to $98 million. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Garza, I apologize for asking this question, because you may not be able to spit this out the top of your head. But this is a large increase for residential streets as well, which I think is, while the Public Safety Building is very exciting to all of us, I think the public would be more excited about us putting more toward residential streets. So can you give us just a list of maybe some of the bigger, bigger ones? Because people are maybe watching this that they haven't been watching others.
So that amount is made up of an amount that goes to the residential street program, which, of course, are the CO codes. I definitely don't have that list in front of me. But some of the high, the big-picture projects include Country Club Mill and Overlay from Navarro to Magruder, Tanglewood Phase One Street Reconstruction, College Park Street Reconstruction, Bonner Street Reconstruction. All those three, being Tanglewood Phase One, College Park, and Bonner, this year are going through utility improvements. So those three are in the budget for next year for street reconstructions. Bridle Ridge Reconstruction Phase Three and Four, and Vista del Sol Street Reconstruction. And so those are the projects. This specific graph also includes Lone Tree Acres Drainage under Residential. And so, you know, that's a residential improvement, you know, to that neighborhood as well. But that's what, those are the big things that make up this residential figure that you see here.
Thank you.
How about thoroughfares?
Yeah, keep it coming. I got it right here. I got it right here. So thoroughfare street projects, Magruder Drive Street Reconstruction, Lingle Lane Street Reconstruction, Vine Street Reconstruction from Mockingbird Lane to Red River, Mockingbird Mill and Overlay from Stockbauer to Loop 463, Ben Jordan Mill and Overlay from Airline to Red River, Pleasant Green Mill and Overlay from Callis to South Laurent, Delmar Drive Mill and Overlay from North Street to Pleasant Green, Odom Street Mill and Overlay from Laurent to Port Lavaca Highway, and East Larkspur Mill and Overlay from Navarro to Placido Benavides. So, and lucky for us, that cheat sheet is part of the budget highlight document. Ken might be able to, off the top of his head, say the neighborhoods that are part of the residential street program if you're interested.
I just wanted you to read those, just in case someone was listening online, and they can find this document for the proposed budget on the website.
Yes. Yes, sir. Okay. So this is just another slide that shows just some of the cash flow as it relates to the CIP. Really, the big takeaway thing here that I that I would probably prefer to focus on is on the right-hand side, which simply just shows a general fund transfer to the CIP. You may recall a few years ago, that was a huge transfer to the CIP from the general fund. And that's kind of come down a little bit. But oftentimes, we get asked questions like, okay, you're seeing an increase in sales tax revenue. What are you doing with it? Or you saved money because you had vacancies. What do you do with it, right? And it'll make sense when I get to, and I'll just go there, actually, because I think it's a natural progression of it. But it flows directly into this. Because what we end up with is, of course, a beginning fund balance, right? Which takes into account the increased projections in revenue or unspent funds, you know, et cetera. And then we, of course, overlay the new revenue that we foresee receiving in fiscal year '24, which is the green. And then we, of course, overlay the expenses. And then we end up with an updated expected fund balance at the end of the following fiscal year. As you know, we have a 25% reserve. That's actually 17 point, I'm sorry, that's 14.8 million dollars. But we've intentionally left a little over $2 million cushion in that, because, you know, we're still hesitant around, you know, what sales tax revenue is going to do. But quite frankly, we also do this every year on purpose, because we're intentionally trying to also plan ahead in anticipation of things that might come in fiscal year '25. And so we sometimes, you know, in essence, want to keep some some money flowing in the fund balance to help us once that time comes. So as an example, fiscal year '25, we know we're going to have to buy a new fire truck. Those things are expensive nowadays, right? And so Gilbert's mind's already, I won't even take the credit for this. Gilbert's mind, you know, is already planning ahead, thinking, because you're the smarter one, remember? Yeah, did he leave? Michael Vandro asked us before the meeting who was the smarter one, and of course, Gilbert is. Anyway, but that's how that, how that's how that flows, and that's why that slide that I was on, you know, really matters to help explain just what we do with that cash when there is excess cash. I think it's important for people to be reassured that we don't simply just leave it stashed away. We use it. So that's my soapbox there. Okay, some of the capital variances, in essence, what's changed from fiscal year '23 to '24. Of course, what's red are things that have come off the budget. Of course, Duck Pond has come off. You'll see on the on the right-hand side, some of those elements that have come off. I won't spend too much time on this. A lot of the departments went through some of the new vehicles that they're purchasing and some of the deferred maintenance issues that they're addressing. So I won't be repetitive in that sense. But overall, there is a positive increase net difference to these capital expenditures of 1.4 million. And that's also some of this excess funds that we receive. We use it for these one-time expenses. Anyway, completely changing topic to transition to pay program. As I alluded to earlier, we continue to implement and recommend phases of implementation for our compensation study and just program that we conducted a few years ago. There is a direct correlation to our ability to be able to do these phases with the fact that over the last three or four years, we've been able to generate new revenue. Historically, the city had not been in a position to generate new revenue, which made it impossible to have conversations around pay programs the way that it has been over the last three or four years. And so I think it's important that everybody understand that the reason why, you know, we're able to do these pay programs and we can continue to do them is not because I'm here, or it's not because, you know, whatever else. It's because we've seen some positive improvements in the tax space that have generated some new revenue for us that have contributed to this. And I think it's important everybody be reminded of that connection. But anyway, I won't bore you with the details of what we've done the previous years. I will point out, of course, and highlight some elements that are on the right-hand most side of this chart. And I'll actually start at the bottom. Because as I mentioned to you in June, we are seeing for the first time a fairly sizable increase to our team. a fairly sizable increase to our TMRS rate, and so that alone was over four hundred thousand dollars additional that we have to send to TMRS. So that means that in fiscal year twenty four, we're cutting TMRS a six point three million dollar check for our retirement. You'll also notice here that we are funding the steps for police and fire. We know that historically, this is something that had been dependent on funding, and again, fortunately, we have the funding capacity to be able to honor those steps, because it is our intent to be consistent with that. So they're reliable, and people can feel confident and have the confidence that their years of service will directly correlate to a pay increase, so we've got that in there. I won't walk you through the details, but hopefully you recall the details that I shared with you in June around just how all that's laid out. Of course, general population is a big priority of ours as well, because really, we have compensation issues throughout the entire organization, not just with public safety, and so we've been very mindful of trying to create these phases that we can, you know, achieve and tackle all these different issues. And you may recall what I mentioned in June, that I'm trying to get to a point where, you know, police and fire personnel can feel confident that they'll get a pay increase every two years, and that everybody else can feel confident that they'll get a pay increase every three years. And so it's just working our way towards getting to that. That's been a challenge. But anyway, six hundred eighty eight thousand dollars of a pay program going into next year. The increase to TMRS is substantial, because if we didn't have that increase to TMRS, that'd be, you know, four hundred thousand dollars that we might be able to have had applied to the pay program, and so instead of it being a six hundred eighty eight thousand dollar pay program, could have been a one point one million dollar pay program, but it couldn't because of the increase to TMRS. And so I think it's important we all understand how all that's connected. This simply just shows, you know, some of the funding sources, because obviously, we have employees that are throughout the entire organization and funded through different funds. The bottom one, of course, is the general fund. You'll see that there's just a lot of things overlaid there from the TMRS hit to, of course, the pay increases to general population, of course, fire and PD steps, because they're paid out of the general fund, and just the usual baseline adjustments that we happen to partake in every year or that happened. At the right-hand most side of the, of that bar graph, you'll notice seven hundred and forty eight thousand dollars increase in general fund expenditure expenditures as it relates to personnel costs. And so earlier, I said how, you know, we had an additional, you know, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in sales tax revenue, it's seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase in property tax revenue. And so if we wanted to kind of try and get a picture of what this new revenue is being used for, I think it's an oversimplification, but it's an easy way to explain it, that, you know, one of those elements is strictly just going to pay program. Meaning, you know, the additional new property tax revenue coming in is very close to the amount that the increase in personnel expenses is increasing on the general fund side. So in trying to find easy ways to explain what's the city using that additional seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars on, our pay program and personnel increases just in the general fund went up seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's a direct link, just to make that a little bit easier for everybody. Just a thought. We are, we have included in this budget an expense for a compensation study that was not in the June edition of the budget, because we do recognize that the one that we did four years ago is outdated. You know, the pandemic threw a huge wrench in that, and so we do want to update that study. It's not going to be nearly as costly as it was four years ago, because we're not starting from scratch, we're simply just updating it. That'll help inform us moving forward on any sort of changes to the way that we approach our pay programs in the subsequent years. I think that's, that's, that's important for us to have that data to be able to make some good decisions on it. So that's in there now. Any questions on compensation personnel costs? Okay. I'll skip through this, because I think I've already discussed plenty of the impact that grants is having on us. This is a supplies and maintenance item, there's a small variance here. You know, last year, we increased significantly the fuel cost because of just what was going on. In this instance, you know, fuel prices have somewhat, you know, come that calm, come down some from where they were this time last year, and so you'll see a small decrease there. But nonetheless, there's increases every, in every single other line item, just like what I alluded to earlier with the items that were approved on consent, they all pretty much came in higher than what we had originally thought, and going into next fiscal year, we're anticipating continued increases in the cost of chemicals and things of that The debt service fund, I alluded to that earlier, that's actually coming down as well. And so one of the things that we have in the FAQ for the Public Safety Headquarters Building is a question around how is the tax rate being impacted because of this Public Safety Headquarters Building? And, you know, we've had presentations in the past that, of course, have showed how debt capacity is being created by the fact that we're paying it off. And so we do think it's a good story to convey that, that despite us having this increase in CO issuance next year, we are, at least for next year, seeing a decrease in the debt service rate, and that's all outlined here as well. One of the new things that's here that wasn't in Ju, that wasn't there in June was a CO redemption bond program. In June, we didn't really account for that, actually, I take that back. We did very minimally, and we increased it now for the official proposed budget. We think this might create about three million dollars in debt capacity in fiscal year twenty five or twenty six, one of those, which one is it? In twenty five. And so that's good, because that'll help us moving forward. Already went through that one, but we have a very similar slide to the way that it, the, the cash flow works on the utility fund side. Utility fund also has a twenty five percent minimum reserve, and so you'll see how that's eight point seven million dollars, and we also have a buffer there of a little over two million dollars anticipated. And so, again, we simply just do that out of practice. And again, to the point earlier, how we just don't stash cash and just leave it there, you could see how the beginning working capital is fifteen point six, and we, in essence, draw some of that down all the way to eleven point one. And if you want to point to one contributing factor of that would be the one-time expenses. We obviously don't take money that's in the fund balance and apply it towards recurring expenses if we can't account for that new revenue, but it definitely helps a lot build that pot up for one-time expenses. Same for environmental services. So you'll see how this operation, of course, is a healthy operation. It rarely has, you know, a ton of extra cash in excess of the minimum reserve, and so we anticipate much of the same. But there's also cushion, because we also know that there's more garbage trucks that need to be purchased. And so we definitely know that there is, I think, two in fiscal year twenty five that will have to be incorporated in that budget, that we're actually in the process of ordering if we haven't already, because, you know, it'll take forever to get them. And so we're anticipating that coming in fiscal year twenty five. Health plan, good news, I'm going to flex through this one. Good news compared to where we were the last few years, we are seeing an increase in claims, but that's expected, just with the cost of just medical services and also just post-pandemic. There was just a lot of things that were put on hold, you know, during the pandemic, and so we're beginning to see some of that come back. We are proposing a health savings account contribution to employees of two hundred fifty dollars, and so you'll see that in the middle of this chart in terms of the budget impact of that. We do think the health fund is in a good position to be able to absorb that, and so this pretty much paints the picture of the history of the health fund over the last roughly ten years, and you can see how that fund balance is just, it's just crazy, the shift that the health fund has taken over the last four years. And quite frankly, it was all predicated on our ability to be able to fund more of the employer contribution aspect of it, which also has a direct link to the fact that we were receiving some additional recurring revenue over the last few years that allowed us the ability to do that. And historically, when you don't have that new money coming in and health expenses go up, money doesn't grow on trees, and so it just was depleting the, it does, it does grow on trees?
It does.
They do? Oh, my bad, sorry, I shouldn't say that publicly, right, that we have a money tree? I'm sorry, Gilbert. But good story there. This is a slide that we thought would be appropriate to put together, because in direct correlation to the improvement of the fund balance for the health fund, we've been able to make some changes, from decreasing premiums to employees, to adding some benefits. I won't go through them, but this is, this is just as a refresher for everybody on what that looks like. We do anticipate reducing employee contributions going into twenty twenty four. The details of that are still being figured out, but for now, we've placed a placeholder of a budget impact of seventy five thousand dollars. We're still working with our consultant on trying to figure out exactly what those reductions look like. We do envision taking a completely different approach to the way that we have the last couple of years. So for example, last year, we, we simply just did the, that one goes down by fifty dollars, that one goes down by a hundred, that one goes down by a hundred and fifty. While that flows off the tongue easily, it created some issues with how, how we split the percentage expense of that premium. And so what we're trying to do now is take a more approach of, okay, what percentage of the premium do we want to cover as the employer? Is it seventy percent, seventy five percent, eighty percent, and just try and look at it from that perspective, so that there's just a more direct link to the fluctuation of the premium? So anyway, more to that, or more on that later. Hotel tax fund, bicentennial program sticks out here. I've got, of course, a slide just on the bicentennial program here in a second. One of the things that we are trying to do is to create better balance between the hotel fund and Sales Tax Development Corporation as it relates to them funding Main Street and economic development. And so when we proposed the preliminary budget for Sales Tax Development Corporation, they saw an increase in the Sales Tax Development Corporation contribution to that operation, and so there's a direct link to this one in terms of seeing it in the red now, because we're just trying to create better balance in how those things are funded. We are allocating some funds for tournament programs, just as we try and intentionally be more involved with sports tourism. We also now, in this version of the, of the proposed budget that wasn't there in June, have allocated seventy five thousand dollars to go towards a study to help us look at the community center and how we can enhance that facility. In the next month or two, we're going to be presenting you, possibly at our September eighth council workshop, an update on where we currently stand with the sports facility assessment study. And what you'll quickly realize when we present that is that it's very heavily focused on your traditional sports, basketball, football, baseball, right? And the component of it that is community center centric is very minimal, slim to none. And so we want to have this separate study done by subject matter, sub, subject matter experts more in the area of equestrian services, livestock shows, rodeos, et cetera, look at that facility to, so that then married and with the other sports facility, we can have a bigger picture, correct, and bigger picture of just the status of our facilities, condition, goals, vision, you know, et cetera. Anyway, that's in this budget. On the bicentennial side, this is a little bit of how that comes together. There's an element of this that actually has a revenue source to it, because we do envision, you know, selling tickets to galas and having some revenue come from some other means, and so we are trying to just guess, guesstimate, you know, what we think that might look like. For us, it was important to have this slide simply just to send the message that not all two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars that we have in there for the bicentennial program is coming directly from hot funds. Of course, there's eighty five that is, some that's coming from interest income, and then some that's coming in anticipation of there being a revenue stream. We do anticipate at the September eighth council workshop, council receiving a more detailed update from Joel and Keisha. Or maybe just Joel, I'm not sure yet, I give her a hard time. Anyway, on just where we are with the, with the planning of that celebration, obviously, as we get closer to the end of this calendar year, it, of course, is bringing up a lot of questions around what we're working on. And so, anyway, more on that on September eighth. On the hotel tax receipts, very similar to sales tax in terms of actually budgeting an increase in them. And so you notice that in twenty twenty four, we actually have budgeted one point nine million, which we hadn't done in the last few years, and so that's actually representative of a four point six percent increase in budgeted amounts compared between twenty three and twenty four. On the left-hand side is simply just a breakdown of how all that money is spent. There's really nothing new on there, so I'm not necessarily going to go through that, but it's there for anybody that might be interested in, in looking at how that money's And so, in a nutshell, that brings us to the end of my presentation. Hopefully, you received the email that I sent with the links to the proposed budget, and of course, you have the supplemental documents that we've passed out and that I also emailed you a physical copy of. We do envision that over the course of the next month, that it looked like this, where today, of course, we're delivering the budget, certified tax rolls. August fifteenth, we'll have a budget work session to address any issues or questions that might arise over the next couple of weeks. On August twenty ninth, we'll have a special council meeting, where we'll specifically have the first budget public hearing, first vote on budget ordinance, first tax rate public hearing, first vote on the tax rate ordinance, and then finally, everything being approved on September fifth. As you know, this is a process that has to end by the end of September, because the budget goes into effect in October. We intentionally always plan final vote to take place at the first meeting in September in case there's anything that changes. It gives us that second meeting in September as cushion, in case we need to push anything out away from this original timeline. But in a nutshell, that's the presentation that I have, and I'll simply leave you with the fact that we always are thinking of the beyond. You heard me reference a couple of instances of us intentionally having this budget be this way in anticipation of, you know, things like fire truck in twenty five, garbage truck in twenty five, right? We're constantly thinking about what that future brings, and so I simply want to leave you with that thought, because I think it's important that council and the public see that even though we stand up here every year, we're really looking at this always as a multi-year process. And so it can create a false picture if there's this appearance of available cash this year, because it might be something that we're planning for in anticipation of coming in a subsequent year. So we're always planning ahead. And so that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, comments, or concerns that you might have on any of that.
Thank you for a very thorough presentation. I got lost during part of it, but I actually was able to find, I was actually able to find it on my own, so I didn't have to interrupt you.
Great.
I want to thank you and the rest of staff. I know this is not just an overnight deal to even get to this point. You started back in the spring working on it, and appreciate you, every one of y'all, all the time and effort it's gotten to get it to this point, and excited about lowering that tax rate. Very, very minimal impact projected for the average household increase, and that's all we can work with. We can't account for every individual instance out there, which I wish we could, but it just doesn't, it can't work that way. But thank you.
Yep, no, thank y'all.
All right, that concludes our city manager reports, and we will go to item E two.
Item E two is a resolution proposing the tax rate, scheduling public hearings, and scheduling a vote to adopt the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
I'm going to go.
Thank you.
A second.
And a motion in a second to approve item E two. All those in favor, or is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item E three.
Item E three is a resolution, resolution scheduling the public hearings on the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget.
I'll move.
Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item E one.
Item E one is a resolution approving the change order number one to the Deleon Plaza Expansion Project to Lager Companies Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety one dollars for a total contract amount of four million eight hundred and seventy seven thousand, one hundred and ninety three dollars.
All right, last but not least. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have a brief presentation on a change order request for the Deleon Plaza Expansion Project. To give a little background history on where we've been and where we are today, for those that are tuning in, the Plaza Expansion was awarded to Lager Companies on June twentieth of twenty twenty three in the amount of four point five million dollars. Construction on the project began very quickly on July eleventh, and is going very smoothly with removing and storing key items such as brick pavers and historic lampposts. Original scope included closing Forest Street to construct a performance pavilion, food truck spaces, public restroom, a space for the HEB Christmas tree, and a space for the Deleon founder statues. The original scope also included four bid alternates, and staff is proposing tonight that we move forward with three out of those four bid alternates. The change order and cost was presented to the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation on July twenty fourth, and the board was in support of funding the three bid alternates. In change order number one, we are looking at removing and refurbishing paint, rewire existing historic light fixtures with an LED light package and reinstalling for a unit price of ten thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for a total cost of eighty five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Alternate number three is furnish and install steel fabricated shade structure and masonry bases for the, for a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eleven, eleven dollars. That is that shade structure that attaches to the public restroom. And alternate number four is furnish and install two light poles with directional light, LED lighting and lumineers and base LED lighting and lumineers and bases for unit price of $56,000 for a total of $112,000. With the additional $304,691, the new contract amount will be $4.8 million. Due to the critical project time schedule and extended material lead times, for example, the steel needed for the shade structure, staff has elected to proceed with the change order number one. The construction time period remains as submitted in the proposal as a 210 calendar day, 210 calendar day project with a completion by early March of 2024, just in time for our bicentennial celebration. And the funding source is from the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation. Again, another view of the site plan. This has changed, just a reminder, everything will stay as is except for the water feature that is in that left circle at the top. And then we'll add back in that shade structure next to the public restroom. Any questions?
What do you mean by shade structure? Will it be actually covered or is it just something that kind of is open and directs sunlight?
It is open, very much like a pergola.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions? Entertainer motion, thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
Make a motion, we approve.
We had a motion in a second to approve item E1, the last item on our agenda tonight. We will have an executive session, though. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to have a hopefully short executive session. And so at this time, 7:09 PM, we'll recess into executive session.
City Council will recess for executive session on the first day of August 2023 at 7:09 PM. Subject matter of deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code 551.07, 551.072, and 551.071.